Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, May 18th, 2022. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. Present this evening are City Council members Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Groot, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick. Mayor Shelby Ronstadt and Council President Kate McAllister are absent. We will now stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One mission under God, and your visit will be with liberty and justice for all.
As announced at roll call, the mayor and council president are both absent. Pursuant to Sandpoint City Code 152, in the absence of both the mayor and the council president, the city clerk calls the meeting to order and calls the roll. With confirmation that a quorum is present this evening, the council will now elect by majority vote a meeting chairperson who will preside in the absence of the mayor and council president and who will sign on the mayor's behalf the documents necessary to carry out council directives and approvals. Is there a council member who would like to make a nomination for meeting chairperson?
I would, please. I would nominate Joel Espiro tonight.
Is there a second?
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
I accept, yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes and Councilman Espiro has been elected meeting chairperson.
Thank you. First want to say I appreciate the honor and I would appreciate your patience. My first time, so thank you. Are there any announcements from council or staff?
Just really quickly, I'd like to recognize our police department in the back. It's great that you guys showing up and you keep us all safe and it's nice to see most of them. Thank you.
And one more. I'd just like to kudos to the Bonner Homeless Transitions Organization. They pulled off their little back dress gala, the first one in two years over at the fairgrounds and did an amazing job.
At this time, the city would like to take a few minutes to recognize some of our hard work and professional staff and retired staff members. This week is the 62nd Annual National Park Public Works Week. The week was designed to recognize the public works professionals who focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and other services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and public health, high quality of life and well-being of our communities. The professionals in our infrastructure and development services utilize and utilities and parks divisions often get unrecognized but are dedicated first responders who are responsible for our streets, water supply, water and wastewater treatment, public buildings and other infrastructure and facilities of vital importance to our citizens. On behalf of the Sandpoint City Council, I would like to thank you for your work to keep us functioning as a city. How about a round of applause for our amazing city of Sandpoint Public Works professionals? I'd also like to announce that this is National Police Week. This week began on May 15th, which is observed as Peace Officer Memorial Day. There are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving across the United States and we have 21 sworn officers in our police department. Since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the US have made the ultimate sacrifice, having been killed in the line of duty. The names of these fallen heroes are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC with the names of Idaho fallen officers inscribed on the honor roll of the Idaho Peace Officer Memorial at Idaho State Police Headquarters in Meridian. Tragically, 619 new names are being added to the national memorial this spring, including 472 officers killed in 2021 and 147 officers killed in previous years. We want to express our sincere thanks and gratitude to the dedicated members of our Sandpoint Police Department. We are a better and safer community because of you. Let's have a round of applause to show our appreciation for all of our local law enforcement officers. Are there any announcements from staff?
Just quickly, council members, this weekend is the return of Lost in the 50s. We have issued a permit for the event and a reminder for the public because it's been a few years since we've had a lost in the 50s. The gathering and staging of all of the cars occurs in the parking lot of Sandpoint High School and they make their way through the residential areas. But the official start of the parade route is at Fifth and Church Street. So the official downtown parade route runs from Fifth and Church east down to First Avenue, then north to Cedar and then concluding at Fifth and Cedar. So I know some who live in the neighborhoods where they wrap their way around to the route have their own viewing parties along the way and so that route will be the same. But the official parade route is downtown, running from Church First and Cedar. That will be followed by the car show on Saturday. So the parade is Friday night, starting at 6 o'clock. The car show will be on Saturday. Our street sweepers will be out and sweep all the downtown streets in advance of the event. And they begin staging cars generally around 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. So it's an early morning for our street workers getting out and clearing the streets. And also fire police will be out verifying that we have public safety access on the streets. And a reminder for any of our local vendors or others who do want to vent during this event. It is part of the permit, the entire downtown core, other than permitted sidewalk cafes and other functions. Everything else is covered under the permit for Lost in the 50s. So anyone who wants to vent during the event is not a downtown business, does not have a permitted sidewalk cafe. There are a few vendor spaces that we make available on Main Street and they are first come, first served, but need to be reserved in advance through the clerk's office at the city by 5 o'clock on Friday. So there is no vending on generally the sidewalks. We do have a few of our churches and others who set up in private parking lots and on private property, that's fine with the approval of the property owner. But for anybody wanting to vent during the event in any of the public rideaway, it's only allowed in those vendor spaces on me. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public to address council regarding items listed on the consent calendar or in any topic not listed on the agenda. Those here in the chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a signup forum and hand it to the clerk. The forms are available on the table by the door. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, please raise your hand. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to council or to staff and do not approach the dais. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone indicated they would like to speak during the public forum?
No, Councilman.
That concludes the public forum portion of this evening's meeting. We will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,475,410.70, reflecting $441,385.24 for regular payables and $1,034,025.46 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
None.
I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. This will be a roll call vote.
So moved. Second.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes. Motion passes. Under Old Business, we have an update on the police department remodel project and consideration of the Third Amendment to the city's agreement with Longwell Trap Architects to account for additional services related to the enhanced scope for replacement of the city's generator. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide an updated presentation.
Thank you, Councilman. Just, I want to take an opportunity for just an update on the general remodel for the police department and also to specifically address what's happening with the replacement and upgrade of the city generator. We are about two weeks out actually from our being at substantial completion with the remodel. So police will be moving back into the new police department in early June. And we are actually planning to, when we get the final date for when that's happening and can figure it out with the move in the next week or so, to announce a public open house because oftentimes the public never has a chance to see what happens behind the doors in the police department. And so this, as we're moving in, is an opportunity for the public really to get behind the doors and see what happens and for it to be a positive experience. So we will be planning that in the next couple of weeks. Reminder about this generator project, our current generator at City Hall is several decades old. In fact, finding replacement parts for it has been extremely difficult. And the current generator at City Hall only powers essentially our server room and our evidence room in the police department. So we don't have power anywhere else in this facility, heating or power for emergency operations during times of electrical outages. This generator update is a replacement of our existing diesel generator that is only powering those couple of areas with a gas-powered generator that will power the entire City Hall facility. So in the event, as we had a couple of years ago where we had a really cold snap and we lost a lot of trees, we had trees down on power lines. Community members that were affected with no power and really cold temperatures. We will have the ability to open up council chambers, our lobby areas, and be able to at least be a temporary warming place for our citizens in need. So the county is responsible for opening the countywide and emergency facility, but this gives us some room and to be able to move fairly quickly again for our residents in the city in advance of a more permanent or a longer-term warming center being open. It also will support us for continuity of operations during power outages. In this area, we used to average about one, one and a, between one and two power outages a year. In the last three to four years, we've gone up to over seven power outages in a year on average. So I know you all have seen the increase. We have two here at the city and so have our residents. So this gives us the ability to have full staffing and to be fully functioning as a city during a time of a power outage. It will also be more efficient along with the generator upgrade. With going to the larger generator and the gas-powered generator, we're also in the process of finalizing an upgrade here at City Hall to three-phase power versus the single-leg power that we have here right now powering our facilities. Our panels here in the city are completely maxed out with no room and the balance of our power load has been a challenge over the years. So we get kind of weird phantom circuit issues across the city. So this will resolve that issue. It will also give us greater energy efficiency for this building and we are in the process of upgrading all of our panels as well. So everything will be connected to the emergency panel. And you'll recall when I provided an update on this earlier, we had an issue as we started into the police remodel where power went out and our transfer switch failed. So we are kind of operating with a jerry-rig transfer switch right now to even go to the backup generator. So all of that will be resolved with this upgrade and then the three power poles that we have running next to City Hall, essentially between where the CrossFit facility is and Pine Street Park. All of those power poles will be removed and all of our power feeding City Hall will be underground. So Avista has already made the changes on their end and we are working with the utility companies that are providing cable service or fiber service on the poles to get moved under the ground now. So the generator will not arrive. It's been on order now for about three and a half months. And due to supply chain issues, we don't expect to be able to move over to the new generator until probably late October, early November. But again, these associated costs were for the design for the new generator.
I'd like to add something. So I was really hoping for a very clear explanation as to why we have these increases and I think that you did a very good job of articulating how much bang we are actually getting for a buck. So I'm thinking, you know, police, they need a new place. Absolutely, I'm all favor helping them out. And then parse that out even more and then the warming hut for the events that are occurring more often, especially for City Hall, it's not just a justification of failing infrastructure and doing what's best technologically for improvements. It's much more than that. And so I think that you did a very good job of explaining to us and hopefully the citizens that are listening, there's a lot that we're getting out of these purchases and there are wise and thoughtful and thorough. So thank you.
Council have any other questions? Some, thank you, Jennifer. Would anyone from the public care to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Councilman.
All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the Third Amendment to the agreement with Longwell Trap Architects City Agreement Number A21-1970-10. So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under New Businesses' Proposed Agreement for Wastewater Collection System Assessment, Professional Services, Utilities Director Greg Lanning will provide a presentation with no prop this time.
No, Mr. Chairman. I know I thought about it for weeks. And when they know that I've got a presentation, they're pushing me for a prop.
Yeah. You got to keep our attention.
Yeah. Well, I know it. It does. Shiny object, lots of money.
Yeah.
But you remember them too. You know, like the filter, for instance, and then the charcoal that goes in for the treatment pond discharge, those kinds of things. I think it's important.
Definitely is. I honestly learned a lot through your presentations.
Well, I appreciate that very much, Councilman. What we have tonight, I'm Greg Lanning, your Utilities Director. What we have tonight are just a few slides and I can roll back and forth between those easily because you'll find that they evoke further conversation. And I know in speaking with Jennifer in particular, this kind of tees up other issues related to the wastewater system itself, but also the rate study that's ongoing and, you know, future council meetings where we're going to be talking about these as well. So it's a little bit more than just a contract for services in this case. But in the end, it'll be an agreement with Stan Tech Consulting or at least I'll ask council to approve an agreement with Stan Tech Consulting for professional engineering services develop a hydraulic model and recommendations for the collection system ultimately in terms of capital improvements. This is a, this drawing isn't necessarily for you to, although I do have a zoomed up version of this a little bit later. This is out of a 2007 facility study that identified some areas within the system that are going to be for the capital improvement program. So I'll be referring to this drawing a little bit further. But to give you an idea, the sewer system lies entirely within the city limits. As a matter of fact, we have an ordinance to provide sewer only within city limits. And that's important because later, when you hear about the water system, our water system goes well beyond our city limits. And so in that case, we're the utilities board, if you will, for a much larger water system outside of our boundaries. Forty-five miles of pipe, a lot of manholes and 18 lift stations, which is quite a bit for an area this small. The lift stations actually, you know, lift the sewer or pump the sewer to a higher area so it can then gravity flow. In general, our goal is to have all of the sewer, or as much of the sewer, gravity flow. And in this case, it flows generally from the north to the south to the wastewater treatment plant where it's treated and then discharged to the lake slash river.
Great. Quick question.
Yes.
What does the color coding represent on that map?
Yeah, very good. We're going to, we're going to get into this drawing a little bit later and I'll explain the colors as well. These are a little out of, you know, the, even though we're talking sanitary sewer, that's generally, you know, when we flush our toilet or what goes down the sink, makes it to the sanitary sewer. So that's sanitary sewage. But in our situation, and a lot of you heard about this, when we have these storms, it really aggravates or adds to our sanitary system. In a perfect world, none of the storms, none of the extraneous water would get to a sanitary sewer system. But here in Sandpoint, we have a lot and it's infill and infiltration are the terms we use. Or inflow, rather. Inflow would be like a direct connection. There's a lot of drains, roof drains downtown, for instance, that directly connect to the sanitary sewer. And so that's rainwater, if you will, that makes it to the sanitary sewer system, ultimately to our treatment plant. There's been a lot of discussions as to what should we size the treatment plant because of that. And so this storm happened and that I, this is an actual storm since I've been here back in February. This graph on the left is a hydrograph related to the storm and it shows in each hour how much water actually rained. And we had back-to-back storms and so this is, and these each were about an inch and a half total. So together, three inches of rain on snow in February. In the graph to the right, you know, confusing in itself, but the main part of it, this is actually the inflow to the treatment plant. And so what is normally, in this case, you know, two or three million gallons a day. After that storm jumped up to an average of six and a half million gallons and peaked at eight million gallons a day. And so this is the effect of the rainstorm on the sanitary sewer system and then especially the sewage treatment plant. But the collection system, the pipes that bring it to the collection or to the treatment plant also fill this inflow and infiltration in these flows. And so we reach capacity in the pipes going to the plant also. And so this model in particular is to look at the old, that old map, you know, '07, and validate if those pipes are still at capacity or how they are handling the flows these days. We've done a lot to control inflow and infiltration over the last several years. As a matter of fact, we even have a pilot program out there in two of the basins to measure the effects of our lining program versus an effects of not lining it. So we have a very good control out there. And this report, by the way, is going to be submitted to us next month, very soon. I've seen some preliminary indications that the, it's working. You know, our efforts to control inflow and infiltration are working over the last, you know, since 2007 when you really made an aggressive effort to go after it.
What is lining versus not lining?
When we line it, we call it CIPP. It's cured in place. Polyethylene. Help me. I got some problems with you today. But anyhow, it's a cured-in-place lining. So we unfold it, it cures in place and therefore it seals the pipe from the inside.
You're lining the pipe, in other words.
Yep. And so especially those connections from our individual sewer connections, that's where we find a lot of the inflow and infiltration.
Can I ask another question, Greg?
Yes.
We've heard a lot about stormwater, not just from you, but in the community as well with a lot of the development going on. Is it, is it ideal for a city sewer system to bear the brunt of stormwater events like rain on snow? I mean, is there a better way that we could be treating stormwater so that it doesn't go into our sewer treatment plant?
There's, yes, and hopefully, hopefully they're completely isolated and that they don't intermingle at all. However, in larger, older cities, you know, like Philadelphia and Chicago, it's commonplace to have those and those are combined sewers.
I imagine like Gotham Batman, like in the sewer, like in the movies, right? Is that what you're talking about? Like it's all one system?
It is.
But that's not how ours is supposed to work.
It's not supposed to work that way and it's our efforts to absolutely separate all those as much as we can.
Okay.
So a closer look at this. Red, our, red is bad, yellow's a little less bad, green is good. And you may recognize the lower part of town. And then these, kind of these three main or four main vertical lines, you know, somewhere around first, somewhere around Boyer, somewhere around Ella, Ella, and then somewhere around Lincoln, right? These are all individual basins flowing in gravity, if you will, to the south and then ultimately to the treatment plant. You can follow any one of those lines and ultimately run across a couple of red spots, right? And then the yellow spots. And then the worst being right there in the middle. This plan actually proposed a major sewer interceptor to kind of alleviate that. So Jennifer and I have come to refer to these as the clogged arteries, right? These are the clogged arteries before they even get to the heart, you know, to the treatment plant. And so we need to, you know, do our best to understand what those clogged arteries are and what it'll take to unclog those arteries. And generally, that's just larger pipe, right? That's what happens over time as you continue to grow up north. You continue to bring new and more flow to these areas and those pipes need to be upsized to handle the flows. In today's dollars, that's around $9 million in this lower basin, just to unclog those arteries. And that's again reliant upon the 2007 mostly report. This contract will take a look at that to see if that's still the case and if that's still the number. Where that fits into the overall cost estimates in a 2021 collection system that looked at this but did not do the modeling, just simply summed up what the sewer system issues were in the collection system. You can see the $9 million plus or minus for the, you know, those lower area collection system, unclogging the arteries. But there are other costs related to the wastewater system as well, the collection system. Down there at the bottom, you know, future growth, 12, 12 and a half million dollars. And therefore the total cost of $40 million. Now, for a long time, a lot of you that have been on council for a while have heard the $100 million figure thrown around for a sewage collection or for the wastewater treatment plant, 100 million. I think, you know, if you look at the reports, it's closer to about 60 million that you need for the treatment plant. But coincidentally, 40 million for the collection system. So it's still about a $100 million cost for the wastewater or for the sewage treatment system, both collection and the treatment plant itself.
Excuse me, Greg, really quick, the blue lines on the map. Are you getting to the blue lines?
I'm not. You know.
I understand the yellow, red and green.
I've, I've got my, oh, these blue lights, good for you. The blue lines on these maps. I refer to blue lines in a different world also. We have a blue line related to the water system and you'll hear more about that also. And that's kind of the limits of the water system, all the blue line. The blue lines on this map are pump stations and pressure lines. And so you'll see a red dot, which is the pump station and the lift station. And then the blue line is the pressure line to get it to the gravity sewer.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's one, two, three, four pressure systems on this map. Yeah, total, all told, we have 18 lift stations, you know, pumping sewage. So once you get to these total costs related to collection, you got total costs related to the treatment plant. We also then are involved in a rate study, as you know. This is just one page out of the rate study and it's not my intent to show you this, this page. But we're looking at, this is one tab and probably 17 tabs in the rate study. You know, each of these feed in ultimately to the bottom line. You know, how much money do we need and what should rates look like? The reason I like to put this up is for a couple of reasons, is that all of this, these issues related to the system or the condition of the system need to be folded into the rate study and then programmed out in a capital program ultimately over 20 years to replace all this capital. So we have to prioritize those. So we have to prioritize those projects and then and try and make it reasonable in terms of rates. What happens in this diagram down in the bottom right is how the funding goes. And so you can see in about four or five years, there's a major funding needed, you know, for the replacement of the treatment plant in particular. This is about sixty million dollars that we're looking to borrow somehow or fund otherwise. And then we'll pay back over several years, twenty, thirty, forty years. And so you'll hear a lot more about this in the rate study in particular. But in, in the, on the sewer side of the equation, major funding is needed. On water, it's not quite so bad, you know, we built a water treatment plant not too long ago. Most of the water lines are in reasonable shape. We're looking at some older water lines that we need to replace as routine capital more or less. And so the capital on the water side is a little bit different than this one, this one needing major funding in the, in a few years to be paid off over several years. So these are the, these are the three or four slides that kind of are, you know, absent a prop in this case. You know, how big is our sewer system? What happens when it storms? And what's the effect of stormwater on our sewer system? And what are the clogged arteries in this, in this case, related to the collection system? How much does it cost? And then how is it uploaded? And how do we take care of it in the rate study? Jennifer, anything you'd like to add at this point?
I would just note that we do have a special meeting scheduled for the second week of June where we're going to be having a workshop specifically on the rate study. So this is kind of a precursor to some of those discussions. But we are kind of trying to hand this off in pieces because it's a lot to absorb across both the sewer and the water systems. But all of these things and our needs, our capital needs across these systems obviously are going to be feeding into the rate study.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I, I did. So I noticed that there are a lot of workshops in that are going to happen. Are those all going to be public? Are those workshops noted for council? Or it wasn't really clear when I was reading that, but there was a lot of reading this time. So if you could kind of clarify that a little bit.
All of those will be open public meetings. So in our workshop format, which we haven't had in a while, actually, since we've turned the room around. So for this upcoming workshop in June, it will probably be a, it'll probably be a good couple-hour workshop on the rates and this first cut of the rate study. So what the council and the public will see for that workshop setting is we actually move off to, from the formal dais and to the back of the room, using the table with the facilitators, having a more informal discussion. But we will be, we will be live streaming the meeting. We will have the recording of the meeting on our YouTube channel, and the public is invited for those meetings.
And are those all going to be council evenings? Because I didn't reference the dates with actual days of the week. Or are those going to be, some of those workshops going to be during work hours and I just would like some timeframe to plan ahead for those. And I don't know, so maybe if it's appropriate, Jennifer, if you could send us calendar events for those so we could get them kind of locked in. And if we have to make arrangements, that would be super helpful to me for my work schedule.
I did send out calendar invite to council for the June eighth.
Right, I did get that one.
And then our other special workshop that we had scheduled is actually related to finalizing strategic planning. So we had that one come out for next week, and that's on the twenty-fifth.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And then Greg, if you will, can you go back to that slide with the yellow, blue, and red, the overhead? So just a quick point of clarification, these red lines right here, these are being bad in terms of their capacity, they're falling apart, they need to be larger, and there's potential clogs already? Is that, is that, or is that just part of your analogy in terms of the, the clog portion?
These, that's a great question, because we do look at all factors when it comes to pipeline replacement. And often, what goes, you know, unmentioned perhaps, is this is a very old part of town as well, you know? And so some of these systems, you know, some of these pipes have been underground for a long time. And so there's certain pipe that we look out for that could deteriorate over time. And so condition is an important factor. And so replacement of pipe, and then especially manholes, old brick manholes, right? And they've been mortared up, and yet they're in a pretty caustic environment. You know, if you don't have enough oxygen, you could have hydrogen sulfide, for instance. And so we have a lot of manhole rehab also necessary. This map, though, in particular, is specifically related to capacity. These are pipes flowing full that are red. And, you know, under certain conditions. These storms, by the way, only happen, as you know, in, in a, in a certain period, you know, a six-week period maybe, where we get these rain-on-snow events in, in, you know, in February and March. And the rest of the year, the, you know, those other ten months, they may be flowing just fine. And so we're kind of trying to plan for that statistical, you know, height related to these flowing at capacity. This, this is also difficult, by the way, for sizing the wastewater treatment plant, and it's very difficult to roll it into rates. Because rates are based on how much capacity we have left for new connections, and can you buy into the existing system? How much does that cost? You know, how much room do you have left? And so you'll see a little bit of guesswork on that related to statistics because it relates back to weather. You know, and weather lately has not been very predictable. But these are capacity-related.
Thank you.
And then also to add to your question related to the upcoming rate study meeting, and it's a workshop. I've been through a few of these, and so it takes a couple hours just to go through what goes into a rate, you know? We've talked a lot about capital, but there's O and M also, there's the connection fees. There's rate design related to residential, commercial, industrial, you know? So there's five or six different factors related to these rates. It gets kind of complicated. We're going to try and keep it as, you know, not complicated, but get to the pertinent points where you can make decisions. So you're going to spend two hours learning that. And so it's going to be a council workshop session. There'll be future council meetings related to the rates. And, you know, and I would hope and assume that, you know, certain public is going to want to come in and talk about that. That, that's kind of after the fact, it's after this workshop, but I, I think, of course, council, you know, it's not, the public's always welcome, and it's an open meeting, and they should listen in and get educated as well. But there'll be ample opportunity after that during the regular meetings to have public input related to rates in particular.
Greg, I think the one last thing I would note with that, too, if we go back to that slide that was breaking down that the forty million. So one thing that we will be discussing during the rate study, and we've had a lot of internal discussions and some recommendations. So you're going to see it as alternatives in the rates, as you'll note, in terms of capital improvements, that nearly twelve-point-five million dollar number, that's related to any growth. So for us as a city, this is considering primarily our area of city impact, which is for the most part, north of the fairgrounds and really west of the railroad tracks. And so where you're seeing numbers here, this is costs, a lot of these costs are related to bringing utilities under the tracks. So even when we think about currently where our city limits are, we're under the tracks on Baldi because we had annexed in the Baldi property that the city owns on the other side of the tracks. And when we start looking at utility costs to get under tracks, and this is based on a water main replacement that we just did in the last year over on Gooby. You'll recall that we're at a bogey of about a million dollars. So that's just water. So then you're at another million in, in sewer. So one of the discussion points that we'll be having and some recommendations that we have in this, this regard is who pays for this growth? And so that will be a strong consideration for council. Do existing rate payers pay for future growth, or does growth pay for growth? So that's going to be a really important discussion relative to the rates. And that is an issue on both our water and our sewer side.
No questions?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if you necessarily tempered my anxiety with eating this elephant, but you clearly articulated and described how big this elephant is. So along with that, you might not have brought a prop, but you did bring guests. Are we going to provide them an opportunity to express whatever it is that they would like?
Excellent. Mr. Chairman, thank you, Councilman. Tonight with us are Nick Smith and Russ Knoll from Stan Tech. They, they are the consulting firm that proposed on this. We opened up proposals back March fifteenth earlier this year. And they were the one proposal that was submitted. Notwithstanding, in my estimation, they're a very good firm and they're very well qualified. Nick is is actually Nick Smith. I've worked with him back in Pocatello almost, you know, I don't know, it was, we, two thousand and five or six on some wastewater treatment plant upgrades that we were doing in Pocatello at the time. So I'm familiar with him in particular. He asked, can we come to the council meeting? And I said, well, yeah, absolutely. And we didn't have necessarily a presentation from them, other than to answer any questions if you do have questions. The contract, as a matter of fact, the packet, your packet electronically was seventy-seven pages. And there was a lot to pour through, but there was about anything and everything you wanted it there, if you wanted to look for it. There, our proposal was in there, our request for proposal, their proposal was in there, the contract itself was in there, scope of services, prices. This is a very distilled version of that. It's, their first task is to look at the existing system. That is, those clogged arteries from oh seven, are they still like that? Please take what information that we do have without a whole lot of extraneous work, give us a quick look at this, and hopefully we have that in July. What, you know, are we still in the same condition we are in oh seven? Noted that I and I may have been reduced quite a bit. What might have been ten or eleven million gallons in that big storm is about eight million gallons, okay? So I, for what I've looked at, think that you have been very effective at getting a handle on this I and I issue since oh seven. That could save millions of dollars at the treatment plant, as well as these pipes. So look at the existing system, you know, as quick as possible. The, the rest of it to look at, you know, growth and developed projects that need or recommended to be done, takes a lot more work. You know, we might need a lot more precision, surveys, et cetera. That's the second component of this, is to look at those issues, develop a decision matrix, you know? What are the priorities? Do we work on collection system? You know, what's the size of the treatment plant? You'll kind of enjoy that exercise. I know I will, and I think these folks are real good at that. That's towards the end of the year. We have a horse and cart issue going on here because we're in the middle of the rate study. It would have been nice to have this inform the rate study better. But, you know, if the rate study is, you know, hopefully, you know, we've estimated too high, for instance, that this refines that better and that we don't need quite the dollars in capital that we've got currently programmed in there. And then finally, they put some dollars to some additional services. They may inform the rate study if we have questions related to that. They may, you know, explore some funding options, you know, there's a lot out there related to the trillions of dollars for infrastructure. And we hope to get involved with that. Just a couple of weeks ago, we met with State DEQ, and had a very good discussion with them related to how that's going to trickle down, and in what form it could be, and can we get some of that? You know, do we call, qualify for grant funding in particular? Can we take the peaks off of those two huge investments in wastewater? Through grant funding, for instance, and make it easier on the rates? And then GIS support, and once they get into our GIS, could you please update what you find, you know, and do that work for us? Those are all optional, and we can trigger those almost at any time. So that's the contract. And then what's before you is to approve the agreement, if you so desire, with Stan Tech, for the collection system in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars.
Any other questions from council? Would anyone from the public care to comment on this matter?
Would now be an appropriate time for Stan Tech to have anything to say, or would this be after? They don't necessarily, you guys traveled all this way. It's nice to see you guys. Be nice for maybe an introduction at some point.
We, we certainly had a good discussion this afternoon related to this contract and the scope. And they'll be back also for a kickoff meeting as well. But if there's anything you want to say, you probably should introduce yourself. They only have thirty seconds.
My name's Russ Knoll. Nice to meet, nice to meet you. I've been to several council meetings over the last few years, and it's nice to see your faces again. I'm a senior project manager with Stan Tech, and I manage the Spokane Stan Tech office. And, and we work regionally here in North Idaho. We work in Eastern Washington. We also work through our Boise office. We also work down through all of Idaho, down in Southern Idaho and, and many other places. So thank you again for being here. We do bring a, a top-notch team to this project, you know, with the goal to work closely with Greg to try to make the improvements be as beneficial as possible to the city. We know there's a lot of money on the line here. You know, it's a small city, you know, you're, you're ten, twelve thousand people. So trying to make sure those efficiencies are looked at closely. And we can, as Greg said, we can balance the collection system with the wastewater treatment plant improvements and try to keep those things as small as we can. We'll take a hard look at all those infrastructure projects and make sure they're still viable from the two thousand and seven study. And we'll also look at efficiencies and cost and make sure there are any other options that could save the city money as we go to. Again, thank you. Nice, nice to meet you, and we really appreciate the opportunity to work with the city here, you know, and work with the city council, you know, staff at, at the city as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Russ is out of the Spokane office. I'm out of the Boise office. Again, my name's Nick Smith, and I'm the principal project manager for Stan Tech and with the company for twenty years-ish. Started in Alaska and now down in Boise. So excited to, for the opportunity to, you know, serve this project and serve the city. And I think there's, again, opportunities for you to kind of balance where that, where those monies are spent and how much you can tighten the, the I and I in the collection system, and how much that, that saves you at the wastewater plant versus, you know, vice versa. So again, the challenge with the wastewater plant is when you have that huge I and I, the biological system at the plant just gets washed out, and the bugs just don't, don't live through, you know, a real washed-out I and I infiltration of the collection system. So look at that opportunity as well, and I'm impressed with how much Greg has learned about the system in the short time he's been there. So props are not, but yeah, so excited to work with, with y'all.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, guys. Greg, thank you very much. Would anyone from the public care to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the wastewater collection system assessment professional services agreement.
Feel moved.
Second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Final item this evening is an executive session. I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seven-four dash two oh six one B to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent.
So moved.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Welker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, though, to the member of the public who attended this evening. Everyone not participating in the executive session will now be, need to exit the room, please, and tell, and, and the Zoom meeting will end now. Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.